Good evening and welcome to the Oregon Board of Business Regular Meeting of March 16th, 2021. We'll have the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence. A moment of silence this evening is for Bella Haines. She started as a Jerusalem teacher and then moved to Wynn. She was the person who started outdoor education in the Oregon City Schools. That means she started picking our kids to camp, a very significant thing to allow our pupils. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, holding it in the hands of the American people, and to the republic, the free and honest states of our nation, where our God and his people will be with us forever.
Here we have the roll call, please, and Mr. Shea is here, but he is on Zoom.
Mr. Shea?
Here.
Well, that's one of those times you probably want to speak up. Mr. Kennedy?
Here.
Mrs. Mulnar, here, and Mr. Zvisky?
Here.
Okay, we need a motion to adapt the agenda as written.
So moved.
A second? Out of second. Discussion? This will include the addendum, please, and the roll call.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mrs. Mulnar?
Yes.
And Mr. Zvisky?
No.
Okay, that's still a majority. Staff and community recognition, we have none this evening. Public participation, I have one card. If you please come forward. Please identify yourself and give your address.
Good evening. My name is Jeff E. My address is 5159 Berlow. I can actually see my house. And I'm Andy Krieger at 1361 South Laundor.
Thank you.
We wanted to come here tonight because we feel very passionate about some of the things that are going on in the world today. We represent Campbell Incorporated. We're a mechanical contractor. We actually live, breathe maintenance. And what covers underneath maintenance is filters, indoor air quality. It's kind of coincided with what's happening in the world today. We wanted to get in front of people just to have a brief discussion on what we can bring to the table to help Oregon schools make them as safe with the best indoor air quality that's available right now. We do understand that in these trying times, there is kind of a lot of things that are going out there that can be overwhelming. There's going to be a lot of bombardment of people getting things out there. What we like to do is partner with people and companies and entities and schools and universities to help clear the air. We're not here to push any one thing over another because everybody that has an idea on what they have for indoor air quality is valid. We're here to help guide. We have done our own research. We have selected some products that we would like to talk to people in further discussion about. To just kind of show you everything that we've done, we've brought some flyers for everybody if they want. If they don't feel comfortable taking them from us, that's perfectly okay. We have email flyers that we can send to people. We've done a lot of things for a lot of entities that are out there.
Thank you.
One of the great things that we have right now is called GPS, Global Plasma Solution. I know people have heard about it in the news. It's basically needlepoint bipolar ionization. So it does it at a level that is safe. It has two UL listings, so we would never implement something that would be harmful. It has no off gases, can be installed fairly simple. And one of the wonderful things about it is it utilizes the existing equipment that's already in the facility. So it's an adaptation, it's a modification. Can some people consider it a retrofit? Like I said, there is a lot of research that's out there. It's not the only thing that's out there. We have helped companies with indoor air quality by upgrading and changing out equipment. But first and foremost, you'll find out that Campbell Mechanical Services is a maintenance company. Our bread and butter is maintaining the longevity of equipment longer, long past its useful life. We'd like that the older they are, the better they are. By that, we mean keeping up on cleaning the coils in the indoor and outdoor, documentation of the cleaning, so that way you have written records to show that, you know, things are being done. Filtration, we do full-fledged filtration for companies and school systems right now. I don't want to take too much of your time, so I wanted to keep it brief. And a couple of things that I'd like to add, and obviously, as on your own time, in the folders, there's additional information. We certainly have partnered with University of Toledo, Holy Green State University, Owens Community College. Our product that we're talking about, the indoor air quality, is also in the White House. They deem our product safe enough to be put in the White House. Also, the FAA has approved the product that we work with to put in, install in aircraft. So once again, it's just another area that is safe with no side effects. And really, guys, when it comes down to it, also, we're here, obviously, once again, passionate Oregon residents. We wanted to like to find out what we're, you know, specifically doing with the funds that we have available to us as a community. But also, you know, I'd like to mention, you know, certainly COVID is here, it's a reality that we live in today. What's going to happen, you know, five years from now, 10 years from now? Is there going to be something new, you know, and different? This is one of the nice things about the product that we represent is, you know, just overall indoor air quality, so whether your virus and bacteria and so forth, our product is going to take care of that or inactivate the, how do I say, different barriers, plus the cleaning and the maintenance. You know, basically, what our main goal really is to be here today is just to have a conversation. I know you guys are getting bombarded, but we've gotten zero silence, or zero response, I'm sorry. But like I said, it's just, you know, at the end of the day, you guys are, we've elected you guys as leaders of our schools. At the end of the day, what, you know, we trust that you guys are going to make the right decisions, but like I say, it's just wanting to have a conversation, maybe inside another meeting or so forth, you know? But once again, just to, you know, find out what we're doing and, like I said, just to educate, we don't want to push, seem like we're pushing anything onto the school district by any means, it's just an education. Yeah, there's a lot of relevant information, this is kind of my book, but if anybody wants to discuss this later, we're going to hang around a little bit. If somebody wants to talk about it personally, or, you know, you can get ahold of us at any time, day or night, it doesn't bother me at all. I like talking about this, I'm very passionate about this. So much so that I, it is kind of a name drop, and I'm okay with it, because if I didn't feel that this was a really good product, you wouldn't have sold it to Channel 13. So right now, the news station has 70 units in operation, helping them out. Is this a magic bullet? No, this is not a cure-all. It's not, we're not here to tell you that. It is one of the highest levels of risk reduction you can do to provide the best indoor air quality with benefits down the road. Once we get past this, because this was, it is an indoor air quality, indoor air purification system, we, by ASHRAE 62.1 standards, we can actually reduce the amount of outdoor air that comes into the building because you have an air purification system, which means, not now, but down the road, a reduction in energy costs. So it's kind of does, it's a twofold product, it's one of those things that we really like. So it is very beneficial, so if anybody else wants to discuss it, or if anybody has anything, we'd be happy. Any questions now, or is this the time or not?
Well, yeah, I appreciate it, guys, this is not the time, I mean, to go into that part, but we'll certainly follow up with you guys, and we'll have that conversation with you.
And the local guys as well, I think I would urge our administration to at least have a conversation since you both live, and probably send your kids to school.
Yeah, and we have folks that live here in our community as well, so, yeah, very well. All right, thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. No further comments, so moving to Treasures Report.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Mulnar. The item I want to point out is we have the review of the True Cash that was sent out through Google Word Papers. I did find when I was doing some work, well, actually, yesterday, I found that we had a missed posting, and so I had attached an updated True Cash, it doesn't change month end closing or anything, but there was a missed posting of the wellness funds into the foundation. So our actual foundation is actually down 5% from last year, which is what we expected, so it makes a lot more sense, frankly. But overall, our revenues are fairly flat at 2%. What we're being saved by, of course, is the increase in our utility valuations and the taxes that come with that. Expenses are trending very flat in spite of our raises, mostly because our purchase services and materials and supplies, when we're not in, the expenses go down necessarily. We're going to be back in, so those should start to trend back up, but I imagine I'll be needing to reduce those in the upcoming forecast. A couple items on the appropriation measure that is being adjusted tonight. The adjustments are completely on the grant side. The auxiliary services got a bit of a perk, so that's one of them, the 401. The Student Wellness Fund, which I just referred to, we have an additional for this year of $470,000. That is money that we use for, excuse me, guidance for our students. I think we have some special psychology services coming in for students in need, that's ever more present at this current time. Our ESSCR funding, I did add the second number, we have it, we don't have it allocated at this time, for a total of $2.3 million, the first amount, the $445,000, and then the $1.7 that we just were allocated. So those are the major adjustments. There are a couple little ones in some of the grants, because they had the final carry forward came through. I also included for you a copy, if anyone had any questions from the Finance Committee. The most important thing that came out of it, well, not the most important thing, but the thing we'll be voting on tonight, was we did, in fact, do a, from the Athletic Directors, we came up with the listing of actual number of games, not including playoffs, versus normal games in a normal season, not including playoffs, because you just don't count on playoffs. And the percentages we came up with, and there was an overall feeling, it was a recommendation from Mr. Beach, and as we looked at them, we thought, you know, anything under, a lot of them were at 20%, we felt like we were, I don't know, it would end up being a pretty small amount, so we were going to recommend to the full board, and it's on the agenda that we only charge fees that amounted to 50% or more of a normal season. So that would be the recommendation there. It's on the board agenda that was discussed. I also, you can read through this, I don't need to, probably go through this, the one thing I, the spring sports, because of the seniors graduating, the need to get those fees paid, we are recommending that spring sporting fees be put on at the beginning of the season, even though the season's already started, like normal, because it'll create a very tough situation for graduating seniors and families to get that stuff, because we won't even know by then, I don't think how many activities there are, most of them are outside anyway. So unless there are questions, that is my report.
Okay, may I have a motion to adjut, please?
Allomed. Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Zvisky?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulnar?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, no executive session at this time. We move to Consent Agenda. Are there any items that the members of the board wish to pull from the regular meeting consent agenda? Hearing that, a motion is needed to vote on the consent agenda item?
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All retirees and state finalists and state team members will be recognized at the meeting in May. Roll call.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Zvisky?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulnar?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulnar, if you wouldn't mind, I just want to acknowledge all the retirees real quick, that we just accepted their retirements. We have quite a few, and I have a feeling we might need a couple more here before the end of the year. So I certainly want to thank a number of these folks. For example, Brenda Radavol is a high school math teacher, 35 years in our system. I mean, she's been here the longest, she's retiring tonight, and that's just an incredible run, as you know, she's been coaching softball for a good amount of that time as well, and has over 500 and some-plus career wins, I mean, she's been an icon to the district, so very happy for her. As of right now, she would like to continue to coach, so that's at least the plan right now, for her to continue to work with our girls in the softball team. Want to congratulate Karen Lewis, she's fourth grade instructor over at Coyle Elementary for her 21 years here. Judy Casally is a school psychologist, has been with us for 20 years, so congratulations to her. Certainly, Vicky Lorel, she has been with our district for 26 years, she's a food service administrator, so we want to congratulate her. Deb Toth, who's a library aide out at Star Elementary, for her 22 years of service. And one we just received within the last day or so was Patty Warren, a paraprofessional here at Clay High School, for her 18 years of service. So I hope I didn't miss any one in terms of the retirements, but again, like Mrs. Mulnar said, we plan to honor those folks, again, if they're willing to come back. So thank you.
And congratulations, and have a lot of fun on your retirement.
Yes, absolutely.
Good times. Moving on to new business, we have a graduating senior. I need a motion to approve the following Clay High School graduate pending fulfillment of state and local requirements that leave by beach. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Zvisky?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulnar?
Yes. Item re-entered new business, the following policies have been reviewed and revised and are being presented for their first reading. A recommendation for their adoption will be made in April. Item C, the Mercy Health Lease Agreement. We need a motion to approve the Mercy Health Lease Agreement. A copy of this agreement was previously distributed to the board. Do you guys have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second? Out of second. Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mrs. Mulnar?
Yes.
And Mr. Zvisky?
I'm going through, staying.
Yes. The winter play to pay fees, we need a motion to establish the fee amount for Clay High School and Bassett Junior High School winter extracurricular activity. It's based on the percentage of game learning completed. May I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Zvisky?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulnar?
Yes. Item E, spring sports pay to play fees. We need a motion to approve the fee for Clay High School and Bassett Junior High Schools' spring extracurricular activities at listed below. Since they're outdoor sports, we assume that they will probably have all of their needs. So may I have a motion, please?
Before the motion, but if there are contract tracing issues, Finance Committee will go back and adjust accordingly.
I think the recommendation was not to do that, was to move forward with the fees because of the number of seniors and folks that are on it, to adjust it at the end of the year is not practical, I guess, if you will, and...
Because there's still potential for...
Well, I think there's a difference, though. I think what we looked at was a difference between mandatory, not having an opportunity, and then if, you know, if there is a COVID outbreak or whatever on an individual team or an individual, like, for example, if tennis players, you know, had to quarantine for two weeks or whatever, whatever the number, missed three matches, we wouldn't necessarily take that into account versus if the health department shut us down for two weeks or something. And that's what's happened, that's what happened both in the fall and in the winter. So that's just, I mean, that's just my kind of recollection.
And we also thought, you know, a lot of the sports, track, they're still going to have both track needs, it's just, I can't imagine the entire track team being, you know, definitely more individual.
Is this more information, or, I mean, this is a policy, right? It's not really a code on.
But the last, well, the only reason we have it like this is because we did say we were waiting, we had to handle all the sports this way. We waived them all in the, was it fall, excuse me? Yeah, and so that's why we thought we better do this, to make it clear that, really, this is our normal policy, and we're back to our normal policy.
I think we said we were going to do it by season.
Yes, exactly.
So moved. Second.
Further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Zvisky?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulnar?
Yes. Item F, we need a motion to accept the following donations. Bowman Ford donated 2,280 Ns to Coyle Elementary School and to Star Elementary School. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Zvisky?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulnar?
Yes. Item G, disposal of materials. The items approved were disposed at the February 16th board meeting, and then disposed as in accordance with board policy. Moving to the Superintendent's Report.
Yeah, thank you, Mrs. Mulnar. I think there's a copy in your packet, but I just really, there's only four items on there, and a couple of them here, you know, are just like some updates on a few things, but I really want to focus this discussion on number four there, the Solheim Cup, because I kind of want to get a sense where the board's at, related to allowing us to possibly make a single-day calendar change for the '21-'22 school year. So let me just give you a quick background on what's happened. So the Solheim Cup is like the female version of the Ryder Cup. The Solheim Cup is Europe versus America, and this year it's held in Toledo. Very exciting, it's a big event, one of the biggest events that we've had come our way in a long time. It is, the opening ceremonies are on September 3rd, which is a Friday, of Labor Day weekend next school year. So Mary Brucker, who's co-chairing this particular opening ceremony event, which is on Friday, which is basically an all-afternoon-evening event culminating in a national singer, we're going to have a bunch of concerts, but a, you know, a primary concert at the end of the night. So they need transportation to bring people from, you know, from outside of Toledo down to Toledo, and it is an opportunity that they brought to us. Mary Brucker is an Oregonian and a big supporter of our school district, as you know, and she's kind of allowing us to help design this transportation idea, which is essentially using our buses during the day to take people, do loops between parking lots that would be most likely at the Great Eastern Shopping Center and the GAF or Oakwood Shagrove. So in order for us to participate in, and we believe that there's a possibility that we could make quite a bit of fundraising money through a park-and-ride system partnering with them, which would be basically channeled through the Oregon Schools Foundation, so the Oregon Schools Foundation would be, I guess, running this particular process and then contract with us, just like the GAF does, if you will, each year, you know, kind of the same model. So what I'm going to ask you for your feedback is if, next meeting, you would be comfortable with moving, we have a PD day scheduled for September 20th on a random Monday, okay? And I know, Mr. Zvisky, we've talked a lot about this, how you've been the past, you know, kind of wanted to bundle days that make a little bit more sense for families, and truly, this made me look at the calendars and go, well, why would this random Monday make any difference if we moved it to the Friday right before Labor Day, providing two things, one, our opportunity for availability of buses and drivers, and two, a four-day weekend for our students and families over that Labor Day holiday. So I kind of want to get your feedback on that, I'm hoping we can make this work, I don't think it's really a big deal, I don't think the community would be upset about it, I think it'd be real positive. I think all the way around, it's a win-win-win, and allows Oregon to shine. We will be the primary provider, our name will be out there, you know, not only Oregon City Schools, but just Oregon in general, and I think it's something great for the schools and the community. So thoughts?
The financial impact of that, the all hours used by the bus drivers would be gathered and paid for by the foundation, essentially, and they would get some sort of revenue?
We would have to pay it and then bill them, but they'll be overtime for me to hold, or it would be...
But eventually, yes. And also, we incur...
Correct, for 100% that is the plan, yeah.
And then there's some sort of revenue that this fundraiser is going to give back to the foundation, hopefully, none of those going to raise funds for that.
We feel very, very confident it'll raise a lot of money, like more than the Frost Fest raises in one day, which is, which was why it was brought to us for that opportunity. We had about an hour and a half meeting today, I learned a lot more about the whole opening ceremonies and everything, and it's even more exciting to me than it was even a couple of days ago, the opportunity, so...
What about liability? With that much activity back, what if there's an accident, is it still all back on us?
Well, as I can connect us to is what we do with the GAF and their liability, looking at Mr. Sandwich out there, who knows the insurance a little better than I, but they're also, the foundation, if this were to go through, is also looking at getting a one-day liability insurance piece for their organization, because they've not done anything quite like this as well.
Are they going to be paying for parking, is that what they're...
Yes, the revenue comes from individuals who want to go downtown, park-and-ride, there's very, very limited parking downtown, they're expecting 30,000 people for this opening ceremony, there's not even, I mean, there's a couple thousand maybe parking, they're coordinating off the whole downtown.
So what are we doing, charging them to park in like the school parking lot?
Not the schools, but we're looking at the Great Eastern Parking Lot, we've been in contact with them, and then the GAF. So right now, right, I mean, again, Ms. Hanson's kind of been working on the coordination of those, but the...
But they will be paying for someone in Oregon, that's what...
Correct, and then we would have loops, yeah, bus-bus loops, that would run essentially, essentially, from about 1:00 p.m. in the afternoon on that day till about 11:00 p.m., because the concert, they figure, is going to end around 10:00. And it's basically, the loop is right down there at, is it Owens Corning, right there on the corner off the bridge, so the buses, essentially, are going to go over the bridge, right down there in that loop, drop off, get back on, that's only 3.5 miles, it's like the most ideal location. So if we were willing to adjust that calendar day, I think that frees up, and also gives opportunity for our drivers, you know, those who want to take advantage of that.
However, I have been agreeing, we don't have the interest from the bus drivers.
Well, there's a possibility we'd have to, I don't, that's a piece that we're going to do next, so I guess the calendar was the first piece in my mind, to make sure that we could even have the opportunity to do it, and then the second piece will get the word out. And, you know, if it's a supply and demand, I mean, we'll have to look at what we have to pay them, right? To get the job done.
It will definitely be overtime.
Do they have to adjust the calendar, like?
Say that again.
Oh, you mean, have to adjust the...
We would be able to adjust that PD day, right? I don't think that'd be an issue.
Probably have to down to...
I don't, I mean, is there any issue there, there, Mr. Pfeiffer?
I would have to talk to Mrs. Warner, who does the calendar. The internal construct of the calendar is what's negotiated, the board, obviously, by law, can determine the start date and the end dates, but the internal construct is something that's negotiated, so we'd have to talk about it.
Well, in that day, we've moved PD days in the past on quite a few different occasions as well, so I don't think it's without past practice that we've done something like that, so, again, tonight isn't a vote on doing that, tonight is simply to get a feel if you guys are going to allow me to move forward and even consider this. I'm seeing Mr. Zvisky kind of shaking his head in a positive way, and, you know, Mrs. Mulnar, I think you're fairly supportive. I don't know, Mr. Shea, do you have any input on that? Not sure if you can hear me or not.
Yes, I think it sounds to be like it could be a very lucrative situation, very much so as I can deal with the GAF, as you mentioned. I would be in support of it.
Okay, awesome, thank you, that's what I needed, I appreciate it. So, and then I think, you know, if, the only other thing I'll mention is that we are still kind of in the running, if you will, to possibly join the NLL, and that continues to kind of be, kind of be, you know, strung out over the weeks, so if, if we were to get an invite in the NLL, we would need the board to vote on that. I may request a special meeting at that point, if that were to happen, let's say, in the next week or so, I think it's a possibility, so I just wanted to kind of give you a heads up, and we would certainly, we can do that, obviously, in person or virtually, if it was simply a one or two item kind of thing, but whatever the board wished at that point. So that's my report, Mrs. Mulnar.
I have two questions.
Yeah.
One is just kind of, the next two Wednesdays... One is just kind of, the next two Wednesdays are the SAT day. Just trying to get clarification, because I know my daughter wasn't too clear on. Is it the start of the school day when the teachers should have the login, and then the kids having the login start of school? That the start of the each class time, that the, the work is supposed to be out and available for them, you know?
I don't know. Can I defer to maybe Mr. Jurispeak, at least from the high school?
Absolutely. I, I made sure I made announcement at 2:30 today before the kids left, because I did have several questions. And it's our normal SAT day on Wednesdays with meetings in the morning. I think we have multiple meetings tomorrow morning, and SAT is beginning at 11:15 tomorrow. And same thing for next Wednesday as well.
So what does that mean for assigned work? When you say meetings, that our class is actually meeting via Zoom?
No, no, I'm sorry. Teacher meetings tomorrow morning, and then the students would begin at, if, if they had SAT meetings at 11:15 tomorrow.
So is there no new work being assigned on Wednesdays?
There could be. It's, it's left up to the individual teacher.
So one is that for the other by the start of the school day or the start of the normal class time?
So if it's a second period class, is it, you're saying, is it, is it like at 9 o'clock or is it at 8:10? That's what you're asking?
Second period would begin 20, a half hour after 11:15, so I would say 11:45.
But you're saying the start of the class period is what?
Yeah. Okay. That was never clarified that specific. But just if we went period by period, it would be 11:45 would be second period.
Okay. And then my last one before my comment, uh, I think today, uh, to the day six years ago, you were prioritized on super extended. So I just want, um, I think graduating in the last six years.
Yeah, thank you.
Personally, you and I haven't seen eye on something, but it's comforting for me just to know that you do have the kids' best interests and the community's best interests and how would you bring things to the board and, uh, when you pull things together. But I just wanted to say thank you for six years.
I really appreciate that. I, I had no idea that, that date, and, you know, you sent me a nice text this morning, and I, I do appreciate it. Listen, what, all our jobs are, are hard. Being a board member is very, very hard. And you do have disagreements, but one of my philosophies certainly is, you know, you, you get past it, you move on, and, and you learn from it, and you try to be better. And so I'm going to continue to do that. I appreciate those comments, and yeah, I love my six years here, and, and hopefully there's more years ahead of me, you know? We've got a lot yet to accomplish. It's, it's very exciting. I think coming out of COVID, it almost feels like, uh, I don't know, rebirth isn't the right word, but it, it almost feels like there's new opportunity ahead of us that if we just, um, grasp it and run with it, we, we can get some real good things done. So, so anyways, I appreciate that.
Is longevity among super influences not secured anymore?
Hard to believe.
Do we have any other business? Hearing then, board committee reports, finance?
Yeah. Mike, Mike, do you have anything to share on finance committee?
Hey, so we're looking at the business that we have, Jay, um, covered everything that was on that interim report, so I would say no, we don't have.
Okay, thank you.
Chair, on purpose, help and safety.
Uh, number four.
Policy personnel, we have those new policies to be adopted at next meeting. Academic, um, we had a short meeting, and using the federal funds, we're considering, we know that we're considering, offering both after-school tutoring and some form of summer school, starting with those students who are most in need of remediation. Courses may be in both reading and math, and I want to emphasize that the students most in need would be the furthest, would be the first, uh, chosen for those things. Credit recovery will probably be offered this summer for Clay. Kindergarten, kindergarten apparent nine will be via Zoom on April 21st at 6:00. It will be recorded and available on the district website for anyone to 10 out of 10. And the third quarter ended on March 11th. Grade two, the third quarter will be final on March 19th. Uh, legislative, Mike?
Nobody at this time.
And student achievement is not here. Okay. Any board discussions?
I have one item for discussion.
Okay.
I, I first want to take this time to thank the Oregon community for their support and, um, believing and trusting in me over these past five and a half, six years. I want to thank the administration in the Oregon City Schools. I want to thank my fellow board members, especially Jeff, for his friendship and mentoring over the years. But for, uh, reasons that I want to remain personal at this time, I'm going to, as of tonight, March 16th, 2021, submitting my resignation from these. So this is my verbal confirmation of that, and I will be stepping down as of tonight.
Okay, I just want to thank you, um, I'm a proud board member, my work was over my 10 years of, of the school board as far as community commitment, through what I've achieved, chair, and president, and the big picture aspect of our, uh, teach off, community teach off to the board, uh, always in the overall, uh, to the understanding. Thank you. Back to you.
Okay, and with that resignation, we no longer have a forum, so we can't do any further discussion. I would like to thank you for your service. It's been, I've served with you, and I wish you good luck in whatever you do.
Thank you.
Your future endeavors. So we can't do anything else this evening because there's no forum. Um, I can say that Tuesday, April 20th, is our next regular meeting. I think we need to watch now for special meetings because we have 30 days to complete the application. So, um, we can't even decide when those meetings will be. Please watch the website, and I get that in, so we can't even vote.
We can vote because the resignation at the fact of the end of the meeting.
I would, I thought it would integrate right now when we do it then, so that's the end of the meeting. Thank you.
Well, it's live, but I, I don't end it.
Well, obviously, this isn't something we deal with every meeting, so it's kind of a confusing point. But obviously, Mr. Kennedy, thank you for everything. Obviously, we be, uh, had a relationship over the years as well, and, and, uh, will continue to have a relationship moving forward. And I certainly wish you the best, your family, they're going to be around our system for a long time, and I, I'm sure I'll see you a lot of different venues. So, uh, good luck with you, and, uh, thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Okay, well, uh, that ends the meeting, I guess.